We're good.
All right. The chair notes the time is 6:02. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge, ZBA chair. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with the roll call of the ZBA members. Steve Judge is present. Mr. Craig Meadows.
Present.
Mr. Philip White.
Present.
Mr. David Sloviter.
Present.
And Ms. Rizwana Khan.
Let me just see if she's here. She is, okay. She's in the attendees room. I'm going to promote her to panelist.
All right.
She is here.
Ms. Khan, we're going to mark you as present, correct?
She's coming in.
There it is, okay. Well.
It takes a minute.
There we go.
Okay.
All right. We'll wait for her verbal agreement to that at a later point.
Jacinta, are you going to record?
It is recording, yes.
Oh, it is? Oh, I see it.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, quorum is present. I also want to note attending this meeting is Ms. Christine Brestrop, town planning director, Jacinta Williams, planner, and Mr., I wasn't, give me the name of the person from.
Dave Cody. Dave Cody.
From inspection services. All right. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to serve, wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 for the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff, and they may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. Remember, the public wishes to speak. They should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen or by pressing nine on their phone. The chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the closing hearing to file for a decision. For a variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing to file this decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed with the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda. First order of business is approval of minutes from August 22, 2024, a public hearing on ZBA FY 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury MA Solar LLC. Request for a special permit under Section 3.340 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 9.35 megawatt, four-point, direct current, 4.4 megawatt alternating current, ground-mounted solar photogenic array spanning 41 acres on a 102-acre site with accompanying battery storage system at three parcels of land owned by W.D. Cowles Company, identified as map 9B, Parcells 11 and 12, map 9, Parcell 27 on Schutzbury Road, RO Outlying Residence Zoning District. Frontage and access to the subject parcel of land are located between 187 and 201 Schutzbury Road, continued from July 25, 2024. A public meeting on ZBA FY 2025-06 Clark House, 22 Lessey Street. In accordance with Condition Number 1 of the 1979 Comprehensive Permit, site architectural and landscaping clients, including design of any signs and lighting, shall be submitted to and approved by the Boards of Appeals before the construction of any building shall commence. Review of the proposed plan for three additional parking spaces for the property located at 22 Lessey Street, map 14A, parcel 63 RG, general residence zoning districts. ZBA FY 2020-05 Mission Cantina, 485 West Street. In accordance with Conditions Number 13 of the 2011, 2012, and 2015, any change in the ownership of this business requires an updated management plan, and that said plan be reviewed by the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals at a public meeting. Review of the new management plan for property located at 485 West Street, map 19D, parcel 9 BBC Village Center Business Zoning Districts. Following that is a general public comment period for matters not before the board tonight and other business not anticipated within 48 hours and adjournment. The first order of business is consideration of the minutes from our August 22 meeting. Has everybody had a chance, has members of the board had a chance to review those minutes? And do you want to make any changes? I thought they were fine. I thought they were good. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August 22.
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved. Is that a second as well over there, Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? No discussion? The vote occurs on the motion. Chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Ms. Khan? You're muted.
Yes, aye.
Aye. Do you vote to approve the minutes in your initial vote as a member of the ZBA?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome to the ZBA meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next order of business is. Next order of business is ZBA FY 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury MA Solar LLC. We only have three impaneled members for this special permit application tonight, so we can't proceed with the hearing on this matter. It's just Mr. Meadows, Mr. Sloviter, and myself that are impaneled for this, so we don't have a quorum. And we also have a request from the applicant that we continue this matter. So, since we can't deal with it at all, I would entertain a motion to continue this matter until November 14 at 6 o'clock. Can you guys do, let's see if we can do that. Craig, is that going to be a good time for you?
I'm checking.
Yep.
We, yeah, we already have a meeting scheduled that night, so.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. It's fine for me.
Give Craig a chance here to take a look.
It's, I have to be in California the week before, but that's, the 14th is good.
Good, okay. So. I'd entertain a mo, I move that we continue this application until November 14 at 6 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second. Wait a minute. So moved.
Yeah, well, I moved it and you seconded it.
Oh, I didn't realize.
I just wanted to simplify it because it's just three of us on this one, so.
Okay.
There's no discussion. The vote occurs. The chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. The next order of business tonight is a public meeting on two items on the agenda. Associate member Khan will serve on the panel along with myself, Mr. Sloviter, Mr. Meadows, and Mr. White. ZBA FY 2025-06 Clark House, 22 Lessey Street. In accordance with Condition 1 of the 1979 Comprehensive Plan, requires a review of the proposed plan for three additional parking spaces for the property located at 22 Lessey Street, map 14A, parcel 63 RG, general residence zoning districts. I want to go over the site visit first. We had a site visit on Tuesday. All the members of the panel attended it along with staff. We reviewed, we looked at the place where the parking is currently located, the gravelled area of parking. We tried to assess from the drawings and submissions where the property line was. It was, we didn't determine exactly where that is. We looked at the turnaround. That was pretty much the extent of our, our site visit. I don't think there's anything else to add, Mr. Meadows or Mr. Sloviter or Ms. Khan.
Well, except that we did ask for a site survey.
Right.
So that could be determined if the requested parking was going to be on the Clark House property or somewhere else.
Yes, and, yeah, that's exactly right. We did ask for that at the, at the site visit. And we also have submissions for this. Submissions include a project summary from the staff, all the board, all the previous ZBA actions and orders on the property. We have a Clark House plan. I'm not sure quite how to identify it other than it's, it's said it's by, it's from Peabody Properties. The submission was dated August 22, 2024. And it's a drawing of the, drawing of the Clark House properties. It looks like from seven, from July 27, 1979, by Clark and Madden and the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency. We also have two communications from the fire department. The first details the requirements that they need for their, for their equipment. And the second requests that they stamp plans showing how the ladder truck and other items would be able to move through the turnaround in the spot on the property. Those are the submissions. We don't have any public comments or anything else, do we, Jacinta? Ms. Williams, I mean.
No, we don't.
Okay, I think that's it. Ms. Gideon, you there representing the applicant?
Yes.
All right, can you just give us your name and address for the record, please?
It's Donna Sue Gideon. Do you need my home address or my?
Your work address is, your work address is fine.
It's 22 Lessey Street in Amherst.
Great. And maybe you could just tell us brief, very briefly what you are requesting and why.
Well, we're requesting to have three additional parking spaces approved on the parking lot. This is all new to me, so I don't really know anything about zoning laws. But the property only has about half the number of parking spaces as it does apartments, so we rarely ever have an available parking spot for staff to use. And so the three parking spots are for staff parking primarily, but they're also there as, we need emergency parking. Like, we have emergency maintenance coming on-site during the weekends or where we're not there, that they need to be able to come in quickly and get to an apartment for an emergency. They need to have a place where they can park without having to go find meter parking somewhere, especially certain times of the year it can be very busy for that. We also use that for if we have vendors coming and they have to carry equipment onto, into the building, that they need a close area so we can give up space for them. And I understand that emergency vehicles also use that space from time to time. If they're parked outside the building, nobody can get around them. Sometimes they're there for a while, and so I understand, like, they will sometimes park in that area also. So there's definitely a major need to have the space for the parking.
Thank you. So, as Mr. Meadows said, one of the things that we looked at was the drawings that were, I guess, of 1979 drawings. The concern are twofold. Number one, we don't, it's not clear from those drawings where the park, how the parking spaces line up with your property, right? We don't know where the property line is. Those parking spaces are kind of filled in. They're not, it's not a survey done. And there's no way to judge whether those, whether the current layout of the turnaround is accurately represented on the drawing, and if it is or isn't, is it sufficient for the fire trucks to get through? And it seems to me that the only way that we can make, we have to make a decision as to whether you can amend the current comprehensive plan by adding those three parking spaces. The only way that we can make that determination is if we have sufficient information to judge what your property is, where your property line is, and whether those parking spaces are on your property. And two, whether after those parking spaces are there, whether the emergency vehicles can get around safely and do what they have to do in case of an emergency. And that all seems to me to require that you need to have a survey of at least that section, which would include the turnaround and the parts of your property up to the property, up to and including the property along the place where the current part, your gravel parking spaces currently exist, the ones that we observed. And I think that, the staff needs that to look at it, and we need that kind of information before we can approve a change in the comprehensive plan. Absent that, if you, if that's not done, those, it seems to me that those parking spaces that you've set up, or that have been set up, not you personally, but that have been set up on the property, are not in compliance with the comprehensive permit. And you'd have to return those parking spaces to grass as they are in the comprehensive permit. So in order to achieve what you've asked this board to permit, you've made a case that you need those parking spaces or more parking spaces, we've got to see what, what the, where the property is, where the parking spaces are, and how the fire trucks are going to get around there. And the only way to do that is with the survey, it seems to me. Go ahead.
So with the, as far as the fire trucks getting around, like, those spaces, as you saw them, like, they, they don't come out into the driveway area any, at all. So they, the fire trucks still can go around there, and they do. They just will sometimes park in front of the building, but when they leave, their only way out is to go around that driveway, so they're, they're able to get around the driveway. All the emergency vehicles are able to get around the driveway. It's just that when they're parked in the driveway area, they're blocking other people. But I, but that area doesn't come out into the driveway area at all anymore than it, than it did before there were spaces. As, as far as the survey goes, and the, I just, my concern is, I'm not sure why, like, I don't have an original kind of blueprint, site plan. I think if I were going to request one, I would request it from the city, and I, I'm not sure. I, I guess I would assume that the city would have something like that.
I think there's two points here, and then I'll ask the planning staff to respond to the city question. But the first one is, the, we don't know if the current, if, if, if the current parking spaces are on your property or not. You may be impinging on the property next door, number one, and it can only be determined through a survey. And number two, the fire department has said we need a stamped, a stamped survey that shows that there's sufficient circumference to, for the trucks to get around. And that's really what we have to operate off of. It's most important. So I think you need to, my opinion, and I'll let other people on this matter speak. My opinion is, if you want to have those additional parking spaces, which are new to the comprehensive permit, you've got to show us that they're on your property and they're, they're not going to interfere with the fire trucks. Mr. Meadows?
I, I was going to, obviously, the fire department, according to my interpretation, is asking for that survey, that work to be done. It's not a matter of how you feel about it. It's just something that has to be done in order to satisfy the fire department and their routine submissions. Secondly, I, I'm curious, and I don't know the, the area to the north of the building that would be the southern end of the Clark House, of the Kellogg House, parking area, is that, you might want to check and see if that could be used for, and I know it, you've got a little driveway into the back of the, back of the building. I know because I used to bring things in and out of there for my mother.
Yeah.
So, that area has got enough of a, it would seem to be a logical place to put your, your parking for your delivery trucks and for your others, instead of using the area in front of the building. And I, just a suggestion that you might look at that, and it may get around all of the other issues that you've got.
Can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, as I stated, there's multiple reasons why we want to have the parking spots. It's not only just for the vendors that come, and we, and they do park there, some of them. The, and I, those spots have been there for, my understanding, a year or more. So I know that the fire department can fit there. I guess I'm, and again, like, I'm not, I'm not used to how these things work with the city. So like, in my mind, like, of course, they know they can fit there because they've done it. But if that, so is that something that they want? Like, no matter what we do with these, we still have to do, like, I have to do the survey or I have to do the survey if I want to keep the parking spots?
Well, you certainly have to do the survey if you want to get the parking spots. And it looks like the, the fire department, and I would talk with Ms. Brestrop and, and Ms. Williams as well, but it looks like the fire department wishes you to make sure that the, that the current layout comports with their requirements. And so that would, you'd need to have it surveyed.
But, so my, my question is, if, if it turned out that we weren't going to keep those parking spots and we put them back to grass, does the fire department still require us to do a survey?
I, you're going to have to ask the fire department about that. Looks to me that, I'm trying to read through the fire departments.
Because this is, this is the first I'm hearing anything about the fire department or them having any requests, so I don't know anything about that part.
It's road closing analysis and evaluation, fire apparatus maneuvers to the site. So I guess it's a que, that's a question that I can't answer at this point, that you're going to, we're going to need to talk to Ms. Brestrop. She has her hand up, and Mr., Mr., well, I guess Ms. Brestrop can answer. Chris?
Yeah, I think that if, am I?
Yep, you're on.
So I believe that if you're not changing anything and you're just leaving everything the way it was previously before those gravel spots were added, then you do not need to have the turning movement analysis done for the fire department. What they're concerned about is that those spots might stick out into the driveway. If you, if you were to pull those spots back to within your property, in other words, we don't know where the property line is, so you may have, maybe parking up over the property line. So once you pull them back, you know, to me, be within the property, they may be sticking out into the driveway. The other thing is, if they're there in that location, the, the fire truck has kind of things that swing around beyond their wheelbase, and it could hit those cars. So if you want to put cars there, then you need to prove to the fire department that the fire trucks can maneuver there and that those cars can be parked within your property. But if you don't want to have those cars there, those new cars there, then I think the fire department will not need a turning movement study.
Because it's already laid out in the comprehensive permit that was previously approved, right?
That's correct, yes.
So is a turning movement study the same thing as a survey?
The swept path, what the fire department is asking for, and this is a term of art, fire apparatus access plans shall be, oh, wait, excuse me. They want an access road created by swept path analysis and turn simulation software. So they want you to prove to them that their truck can adequately get around that curve with those new parking spaces on your property. And that is a, a process or an analysis that's done by an engineer. Engineers have this type of software that can perform that analysis. And we often see that for planning board applications as well as zoning board applications. They submit a separate plan showing how their fire truck comes around. But if you're going to leave everything as it was before those gravel spaces were installed, that was a plan that was approved many years ago by the zoning board of appeals, so you can leave that there. But that would mean taking those gravel spaces out. So it's sort of a choice that you have to make or your company has to make as to if you want the spaces, then you need that swept path analysis and simulation software, turning simulation software, and you need a survey. But if you don't want to have those spaces there, then you don't need that.
Okay, so just to recap, it's called a swept path analysis and a simulation software?
A turn simulation. Did Ms. Williams provide you with the email that came from the fire department?
I forwarded it around 5:40 because it came in a little late for us as well, Donna Sue. So it was sent to you, but you may not have seen it before the meeting started.
Yeah, I left early from work so I could get here in time to get on with you guys, so I mean, we'll look for that tomorrow. So is, so that's clear of like, exactly.
That'll explain it.
And then you said that's done by an engineer. We would also need to do a site survey with a site surveyor?
Yes.
Two things.
If you want to keep the parking spaces there, you have to prove that, that you're on your pro, you're on your property with the.
Okay. And I, and I'm sorry to keep bringing this up. I, I guess I'm just, I don't understand why the city doesn't have something that shows what our property line is. Like, if I needed to know, I, I would go to the city, I would think.
No, Ms. Brestrop, perhaps you can help. I'll explain it. The city doesn't, doesn't provide the stamped survey. If you want to have a certified property line, you get a surveyor to do that. It's not done by the city. Please enlighten me if I'm wrong, Ms. Brestrop.
No, I was just going to point out that there may have been a survey. There probably was back in the 1970s, but we don't have access to that right now. Some engineer who worked for your company or the previous owner in the past may have that, or it's possible that it could be on the registry website, Hampshire County Registry of Deeds. There may be something there, but we don't have access to a survey of your property at this time. So your option is to hire a surveyor, and sometimes engineers and surveyors work together. So you might find a firm that can do both the survey of that little area and also the swept path analysis and turn simulation.
Okay. So is there any possibility of getting any of this in writing from you guys? Because if I'm going to go to the owners of my property, they're going to want to see something more official than me just saying we need this.
So Donna Sue, I actually sent them an email this morning as well requesting that.
They forwarded that to me.
Okay.
Well, my, so my comp, the company that I work for, we're the management company.
Okay.
So I, I did see that, but I don't think that anybody at Peabody, honestly, I don't think anybody at the owners has that stuff either. It's from so long ago, and, and there's been multiple owners.
Ms. Gideon, and here's what I'm going to suggest, is that you give Ms. Williams a call tomorrow. Work out exactly what you need between the two of you to inform your owners, what information you think they need.
Jacinta is Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
You call her tomorrow, get the information that you, that, that you think you need, and proceed that way, and that would.
Okay.
That's the only way this is going to work. We're not going to be able to litigate this here on the, on the meeting tonight, so.
No, I know, and I was not, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I just, again.
You're not being difficult, it's just I, you're, you can get the best information from Ms. Williams and she, and/or Ms. Brestrop, and they can provide you with what you need to give to your owners.
Okay, so Jacinta, is your phone number on the emails that you've been sending me?
It's not, but I will, I have your number, and I can give you a call.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I'm pretty available tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
So, alright.
Mr. White, you had your hand up for a long time and I wanna give you a chance to ask a question if you had it, still have it.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna say to the applicant, yeah, I think my concern is the same as the rest of the boards, looking at the, you know. Blueprint that we've been provided, I did some quick Googling, um, according to Traveler's Insurance, which they would collect that on this. The average length of a pickup truck manufactured and sold in the United States, obviously there's a huge variation, uh, is between eighteen and nineteen feet. Uh, depending on cab length and you know, a bunch of different versions, but. With the dimensions we were given of eighteen feet long, twenty-five and a half feet. No, that's not twenty-five, anyway, yeah, twenty-five and a half feet wide for the three parking spots. That's why, I mean, I would absolutely need the surveys, because when we're looking at the roundabout, where the fire trucks would go around. There is a portion of this, it looks to be about three feet in this drawing. That's showing it as a parking spot, but it's actually the route that people would get around, so that's why I would need a survey. Um, to kind of make an decision on this, but it's a rather long-winded way to say it.
Yeah, so I think, I, I, I think we've got consensus amongst the board that we need the information. Or you need to not, you need to decide that you don't want those parking spaces and maybe follow. Mr. Meadows' suggestion of exploring in some other place, but if we're gonna, you're asking us to approve it, we need, we need further information. So, um, I, Ms. Brestrop, do we have to vote to continue this to a date certain as a public meeting? Or we can schedule this without a, a vote on a, we can continue this without a vote to a date certain, correct?
You can continue it without a vote, cause it's not a public hearing.
Correct, alright. So, um, I would entertain a motion to continue this matter. Uh, until when the, the applicant comes back and says they either have. Uh, more information to provide us, or they've made a decision to amend it, amend the comprehensive permit to provide parking in another place.
I second it.
Well, then I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? No discussion, uh, chair votes aye, the vote occurs on the motion, the chair votes aye, Ms. Ro- Ms. Khan? I think that's an aye, put your thumb up, you think, okay, we'll come back to Ms. Khan, Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
Ms. Khan, you're muted, just give me a thumbs up. Alright, we got five votes for it. Uh, alright, Ms. Gideon, um, work with the staff and we'll try to, they'll do the best they can to help you out, okay?
Hey, thank you, I can just, done, I can, I can leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, just since I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Yeah. Bye.
Thanks.
Okay, aye, now I can say aye.
There we go, alright, you're officially recorded as aye.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, the next order of business is FY, ZBA FY twenty twenty. Dash zero five, Mission Cantina, four eighty-five West Street. In accordance with conditions number thirteen of several uh, special permits, including two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve and two thousand fifteen. Any change of this ownership requires an updated management plan and that said plan be reviewed by the Amherst and Board of Appeals at a public meeting. Submissions we have from the new owner of the property. Excuse me, um, a new management plan with amendments to the management plan which essentially. Um, change the, remove a smoker and then removes a food truck. Is in essence what the submissions are, there's no other submissions from the town. Uh, is there anything else that I've missed in that, Ms. Brestrop or Ms. Williams?
No, that's it.
Who's representing the applicant, can we bring those folks in?
Bill is here and Dave is here.
Great, um. Bill Kay, are you the person who's gonna present for the, uh, for your, your team?
Yeah, I'm here with uh, my business partner and co-owner, Walter Pacico.
Okay, just give us your name and address.
Uh, my official name is William Kitzelis, um, my address is twenty-five Channing Avenue, Providence, Rhode Island.
Alright, please proceed.
So, um, I wanna thank the committee, uh, and Mr. Chair for. Hearing us today and get us, and the staff for getting us on short notice, um. We, we missed this in our diligence, um, we were aware of the restrictions, we just, um, just missed it asking for this, um. Hearing and I appreciate the staff for scrambling and I. And I assure you that a third grader did not fill out the application, that's just my terrible handwriting, if I had time, I would have typed it up, so. Um, I, I apologize for the presentation, but we were at a closing table scrambling to get this in, so, um, thanks, thanks and bear with us. With that said, um, we are taking over, we took over the Mission Cantina, both locations, one in Amherst and the one in East Hampton. Doesn't, doesn't affect this governing party, but just wanted to point out, um, Walter and I, um, Walter owns a. Is a long-term operator of, um, Antonio's Pizza, Amherst, I think he's worked there, Walter. Worked for almost twenty-five years on and off over the years, is, is overseeing that location. So he's kind of a pillar and a well-known person in the community and he kind of kept an eye on this location. Really liked the product and we thought it was a great opportunity when we heard that the prior owners were looking to exit the business and do something different. Um, we operate two lots with full liquor licenses in Belcher Town, Antonio's Pizza, Belcher Town and the Grapevine Grill. And we've, um, love Western Mass, we love Amherst, we love the community out there. And we're excited about taking, um, what we think's a good concept and hopefully over time making it better, so with that said, um. You know, Walter and I, between the two of us, own and operate over ten different restaurants, so we are very familiar with kind of the ins and outs and intricacies. Of what's needed to run, um, a clean, safe and professional, um, establishment. Um, and, you know, a- as you can see from the answers, a lot of this stuff is in place, but we tend to. Actually do a little bit more than what we're presenting here, just in terms of our diligence and staying on top of it, so, you know, we have a try, trash folks in place. Um, we have the, we happen to own, we bought the property as well, so we, we're in charge of the landscape, we have. A landscape team, we also have other landscapers, if there's issues, all the lighting is, um, existent and we feel sufficient prior to the. But in, in coherence with the prior, um, ZBA decisions. Um, and that we're not changing any of the signage right now, um, we. Have pest control there and so kinda everything's the same, the menu's exactly the same. So I don't really have much to use, the two bigger things is, we just wanted to clarify, we did remove the smoker. Um, and we did, and I guess the prior tenants, we didn't even know, um, were using a food truck, so that's not there as well, so I thought it was important to just kinda note that. That kind of change, um, and, and the lack for a need for that, just to. A burden, um, use on the property, so with that said, I'm happy to take any questions and, and. And answer any, and, and answer them the best that we can.
So our, our responsibility is, is really just to, um, view any changes in the management plan and under the change of ownership and that. Um, and that you've identified the two changes, which is the smoker, which was approved in a subsequent, a special permit and the, and the food truck. And you understand that if you're gonna make future changes that are, that are, um, conditioned. In a special permit, you've gotta come back to us and.
Yep.
And you know that, so, as a long-time business operator in Amherst, so I, I have no, I have no questions about. Uh, what you're proposing and I'd open it up to any other board member who may, may have a question. Mr. Sloviter?
Well, I just, I just wanna clarify one thing so that I can be completely clear. Other than removing a smoker, which was approved, but we can't require you to keep, we can't tell you, you have to have a smoker. And a food truck, which you're removing, cause we can't, nor do we care to ask you that, you're making no other changes. To the operation, to outdoor seating, parking, uh. It's the same operation under new ownership, that's it.
That's it, yep.
Thank you.
We, we do have plans in the future and we've engaged an architect to, to fix the facade and clean the place up. And, but that will be probably six months, eight months from now and that will go through a full process, I'm only telling you that. Because we're excited about that change, we think, we think the property's a little tired and we wanna make it better and more appealing. So when that happens, we're gonna go through all the proper channels, we'll hire the right experts and professionals to make sure that, um. You know, we're, we're doing everything right, we, we don't. We, we, we don't, you know, we have a saying, break the rules, the rules break you, so we're gonna stick to that and we'll make, follow the rules.
But, but until you get to that point, I wouldn't know the difference if I walked into Mission Cantina. Next week from the previous owner, I, nothing is different.
Nothing.
And the da- and the, um, margaritas will be just as good.
Yeah, Cr- we're lucky enough that, uh, Kristen's staying on, the, the barman. Um, and the whole staff staying on and we also have the added advantage that many of those, uh, team members in Mission Cantina have worked. Um, for us, Antonio's over the years, so they were, so we have a good relationship, we're not looking to change anything, we think the food's fantastic. We think the drinks are fantastic, um. We're just, we're honestly looking to learn and then, you know, things that we think we could do better over time, we'll do operationally. But, you know, one is that it's a tired-looking building, you know, we made our other tenant, Sibby's, remove an outdoor cooler that was just out there broken, so we don't. We don't operate that way, so hopefully you'll see just kind of a. It, it, an aesthetic beautification of the property over time.
Alright, well, if, if the, um, if the, um, margaritas go downhill, you'll have to come back before the committee.
Yeah.
And get permission to be serving an inferior margarita.
We will, uh.
Okay.
That was awesome, thanks.
Any other questions? Alright, I entertain a motion to approve the management change.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion to approve the management plan change? If not, the chair votes aye, Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
And Ms. Khan was impaneled for this, but at least. Off, she's left. So, the vote is four to zero to one, uh, one not voting, the motion passes. And I would just say that please keep the mole sauce. That's really, the mole is, the mole is wonderful, I know it's a lot of work, but I love that mole that they, that they have for the chicken mole.
We, we do too, trust me, we're not, we're not changing anything.
That's, that's good stuff, alright, thank you and good luck.
Appreciate it, come in soon.
If we must.
Alright, uh, the next order of business is a public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. I see no, I see five people, but no hands up. I see nobody. See no public comment at this point?
That's correct.
Alright, next order of business is, um, new business, anything not anticipated within the last forty-eight hours and. Ms. Williams, I think it'd be helpful if we just run through the next two meetings that we have.
Sure. Okay. Alright, so the next meeting that we have is next week with Wayfinders, um. I know that one of our core members for that panel will be out, Mr. Henry will be out that week. Um, but that should be fine, that'll be his one that he can miss. And I believe we have requested from the applicant, any presentation materials or any, you know, updates that they have to be sent to us. So that we can include them in the application or in the meeting packet, so we're waiting to hear from them. And then after the nineteenth, we have a regular ZBA meeting on the twenty-sixth. And I currently do not have any applications coming forward for that meeting, so that could potentially be another Wayfinders meeting. Which is the plan to kind of help move things along with the comp permit. If we ever find ourselves with a meeting date where we don't have applications, um, to just. Kind of keep the ball rolling with Wayfinders, that's what the next two weeks looks like.
And Ms. Williams, I, I know it's, what's, I misplaced my, uh, little schedule, what's the topic for next week for Wayfinders? Is it site, physical site, or is it, um, architecture and?
So, the topics for next week would entail, uh, site design, landscaping and screening. Lighting and parking, architecture, mechanical systems. Possibly stormwater management, if we can get to all of it, stormwater infrastructure and design. Um, and as well as basically just property management, income restrictions, financials. And the applicant selection process and the discussion of local preference, so that's a lot.
I, I think it's just, I, 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 I think we can only. Realistically anticipate a couple of the first three or four of those items.
That's perfectly understandable, so, um, if we don't get to it on the nineteenth, I think there's always the twenty-sixth as well.
Yeah, well, that's, we got a lot there, alright. Um, and perhaps it'd be a good idea to, uh, circulate that, the, uh, this pared-down. Agenda of items for the, uh, for the board and for the applicant before the meeting starts.
Sure, I will do that.
Time next, early next week. Uh, or during next week, cause it's two weeks away, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments, questions from members of the board or Ms. Brestrop, do you have anything you wish to add or Ms. Williams?
I don't have anything, thank you.
I don't have anything either, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn unless somebody has more to say.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, this is not debatable.
No, it is not.
On the motion, Mr. White, the chair votes aye, Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Sloviter?
Aye.
The vote is four to nothing with, uh, one not voting, the motion carries.
It feels like early parole. I don't know what to do with myself for the rest of the afternoon.
Enjoy it, take.
Yeah. Had I known, I didn't need to snort down dinner at twenty of six.
Well.
There you are, live and learn.
Live and learn, well, enjoy, enjoy it.
If you hadn't, we'd probably gone to ten o'clock.
Yes.
Right, that's for sure, that's for sure, alright.
Thank you, everybody.